I'd like to welcome you to the April 30th, 2018 meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Plord.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Protam Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Campana.
Here. Commissioner Frazier is not here tonight. Could I please have a motion to excuse him with a reason? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we excuse Commissioner Frazier as he is out of town.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed, that carries six zero. Okay, we have the agenda in front of you. Someone care to make a motion to accept it? Commissioner Schlegel?
Move to accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed, that also carries six zero. We come to announcements. As you all know, tomorrow night is a Planning Commission meeting. The agenda item on the proposed condo has been scrapped. It will not be on the agenda tomorrow night. The meeting will still proceed, but there will be no discussion on the proposed condo. Apparently, the developers are not able to make the meeting and they're going to try to reschedule for further time. Normally, the Planning Commission meets at 6:00 PM on the first and third Tuesday of each month. And the public is always welcome, so if you're concerned about that item, you might want to watch for a future meeting. The other item I'd like to address is... All municipalities have a city clerk or something like a city clerk. Marquette is fortunate to have a city clerk in Chris Hazardus and a deputy city clerk...
Where'd it go? Yeah. Is he still here? I'm looking for the paper.
The deputy clerk is Kyle Whitney. This is a job that people do not just walk into. According to the city charter, city clerk is the custodian of the city's seal and shall affix it to all documents and instruments. The city clerk should also be the custodian of all papers, documents, and records pertaining to the city. Kyle has been the deputy clerk now for three years. He's gone through training, studying, preparing. He was just recently awarded by the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. He has gotten the Certified Michigan Municipal Clerk Certification Program. Clerks are recognized for their knowledge of the multifaceted clerk's profession. Deputy clerk Kyle Whitney has met the program criteria and has attained the prestigious CMMC, which is the Michigan Municipal Clerk Certification. So Kyle's done well. We're proud of him and we're glad you have done this, so thank you, Kyle. Next, we move to boards and committees. Tonight, we're going to welcome one new member. And if I could have Orville additional at the podium? Orville has agreed to serve on the Prescott Isle Park Advisory Committee. Orville is no stranger to the city. He has worked for the city and the Police Department for 30 years, I believe, Orville, and of which a number of them were as captain. How many years was that? Fifteen years as captain, okay. So you're familiar with the city. You'll be an asset to the Prescott Isle Park Advisory Committee. We appreciate you volunteering, put in a couple hours each month to, you know, help make the city a better place. So we do thank you. We're going to give you a pin. It's a pin that shows you're a volunteer, and again, we appreciate what you're doing.
And you've already taken the oath. You're okay, good.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have three appointments. They are Ron Sundell to the Prescott Isle Park Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 4/1 of 2021. Alan Sherbinoff to the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 5/30 of 18. And Dan Emendorfer to the Local Development Finance Authority for an unexpired term ending 8/1 of 21. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Plord?
I move that we appoint Ron Sundell, Prescott Isle Park Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 4/1/21. Alan Sherbinoff, Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 5/30 18. And Dan Emendorfer, Local Development Finance Authority for an unexpired term ending 8/1/21.
Second, Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed, that carries six zero. Next, we have one reappointment. It's John Mallow to the Peter White Public Library for a term expiring 5/1 of 2023. Is there a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I have a motion to appoint John Mallow to the Peter White Public Library Board for a term expiring 5/1 of 23.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed, that carries six zero. Next, we come to our first public comment of the evening. Public comment is a time when citizens may reserve time to speak on an upcoming agenda item, or you can speak to us about anything that concerns you at this point. At the front podium, we will give you three minutes. We need your name and local address. So we're going to open public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this point?
Hi, my name is Emily Lewis. I live at 501 East Ridge Street, and I would like to make a public comment under Item 7, New Business.
Hi there. I'm Colleen Roberts, 903 Adams Street, and I would like to take three minutes right now, if I could, and discuss the Washington-Lakeshore Boulevard intersection. They say picture's worth a thousand words, so I gave you each two, okay? If you notice, the very first one is at the stop sign at the end of Washington Street where it intersects with Lakeshore Boulevard. You cannot see oncoming traffic around that curve. We have two vibrant businesses there, Iron Bay and Soul Aztec. There is Matson Park where people are trying to cross. You have the birdhouses, the Flanagan Building. You can go down the other way. There are condos. There's a hotel. They're now putting up apartments and, I assume, businesses, okay? The traffic is increasing there. Matson Park has activities all summer long, okay? I am asking that you remove the stop sign at the end of Washington Street and reassign it to Lakeshore Boulevard going north and south, and put on a sign just like you have on Lakeshore Boulevard by Berga Avenue. You have a stop sign there, and underneath it, it says, "Berga Avenue, traffic does not stop." It's quite an easy fix. People that go to Matson Park or to the restaurants, there isn't a lot of... There's not a lot of parking around those restaurants, so you have to walk down to the public parking area. And I think this would really help. I hope you really do consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Gustafson, Marquette, Michigan, Street 311, Albert Street?
Thank you. I want to make a comment on the condo project. The fact that it's been taken off the agenda tomorrow night is... Can I still comment on that here?
Yes, you may.
Can I do that now, or?
Yes, you may.
Okay. I know a lot of people are against the project, as I am, and they're not here tonight, a lot of them. But my concerns, number one, is the height of the building. That's a major concern to me. The design of the building, I think it's inappropriate for that particular neighborhood. And I'm concerned about the traffic, the increase in traffic. That'll be a result of that construction project. I don't think it's appropriate for that area of the city. If they were willing to downscale that project to perhaps three stories with less people involved, with the density of the small area they have, I think a lot more people would be willing to accept some kind of a project. But again, I'm, at this point, I'm voicing my opposition to that, and I look forward to that being reassigned to the Planning Commission. And that's basically it for now. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Erby, 331 Mesner Street, Marquette. I'd like to take a few minutes, less than three minutes now, to talk about one of your honorees tonight, Mr. Carl Zuger. As co-chair of the project for Father Marquette Park, worked very closely with Carl. He was magnificent in the process. He knew his work. He knew how to go after grants. He knew how to work with the state of Michigan. Without Carl, the project would not have happened. I think it's a great honor for him and his family, what you're going to be doing tonight, to designate a part of the park in his name. I remember Carl when he came to the city as Assistant City Manager. I happened to be in office at that time. It was a great opportunity for us in the city to bring his talent here. And through the course of time, he has been exemplary in what he does, how he does, how he did it, and bringing people together. So with that said, I could go on and on, but I think you'll do that tonight, and hopefully, you know, the honor will be bestowed on Carl. And I'll be looking forward to that day that the project will be completed this year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission.
Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in City of Marquette. I want to second that. By all means, Mr. Zuger deserves some recognition, and this is appropriate, and this is very nice of us as a city to do for him. I though, that doesn't bring me up here. What brings me up here is last, last session, early April, you guys said that the... You decided on taking a million dollars from, a million and a half dollars from one project and devoting them to another project, with a million dollars of that being put aside into a fund to use later. Just want to bear with me on this. 20, 40, 60, 80, 100. 20, 40, 60, 80, 200. 20, 40, 60, 80, 300. 20, 40, 60, 80, 400. 20, 40, 60, 80, 500. 20, 40, 60, 80, 600. 20, 40, 60, 80, 700. And I'll stop there because I'll give Mr... I'll give our lighthouse $300,000. But that is how many elections you could have had just by putting the money aside instead of to a fund for a lighthouse. By the way, which I get escorted off by the police every time I go down to take photos, sunrise photos. Apparently, the park is closed, even though we just spent a million dollars on, on keeping it in our name. So in that sense, think about, we could have had 50 elections, okay? Fifty special elections for the money that you put aside to a special project that supposedly cost us a dollar when we got it, when we acquired the property. I'm not saying don't put any money towards it. I'm not saying we should cut off all funds. What I am saying is that if you ever say again that we don't have enough money for a special election, God forbid, we never have a suicide from a former mayor and a stroke on a sitting mayor, but if we ever need three special elections, I would like to see part of those funds that you just put towards a lighthouse, which can't be used by the general public, put towards a fund for special elections only. There's only $50,000, and that'll get you two of them. That'll get us both of our elections. But right now, we have a third of the sitting panel who were appointed and not elected. And I'm trying to stand up for democracy here to say, the city government job is to make sure that we can provide a voice for the citizens. And one of those voices is elections. And even though they're expensive, it is one of the requirements of a government in a democracy to fund elections. I hate hearing the fact that we had no money for special elections, and yet we put a million dollars into a fund to a bank. Now that's the end of that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Frank Jeff Verito, just picking Items 6E and 8. These are my opinions. A recent article reported loud noise emanating from a new energy center even before it's fully throttled up. What do our energy plant, Lakeshore Site, and Flounders have in common? Residents were lied to in cases of utter betrayal. They were assured there'd be no noise issue with the plant, only to now say that it sounds like a freight train. Furthermore, you've blocked the rest of our lake view from the roundabout with Phase 4 of your glitzy townhouses. Ignoring years of comment and plain-as-day evidence, with no effort to lessen the impact after this board assured nearby residents that their views wouldn't be blocked. Your larger building at Flounders is another lie. Height isn't the problem, nor the design, unless that's changed. People are upset that there's no semblance of this promised retail transition from our shore to downtown. A similar lie occurred at Lakeshore Site, where a fast talker promised to renovate the historic buildings and the shops and loft apartments. Now, glitzy private five-story eye stores are planned regardless of the 35-foot nationally-recognized guideline. April 9th, both female members neglected to offer closing comments. If nothing worth their mention occurs over an entire meeting or the weeks between meetings, then occurs to pursue different pastimes. There's too little female involvement on this board, especially with Ms. Campenzi gone, so please speak up. An April 10th article quoted the first and last sentences in my April 9th Budget Amendment comment on reallocating funds from College Avenue to our lakefront. Yes, I mentioned that the man before me made good points about not reallocating the funds, and I did question where the money will come from once it's time to reconstruct College Avenue. The publicity is appreciated, and in no way did they defame me, in fact, quite the contrary. However, my comment, aside from those two sentences, was spoken from the platform that those funds should be diverted to our lakeshore for reasons mentioned by this board and in the body of my comment. I agreed with this board, asking only that the allocations for the listed projects be adjustable pending which grants we can obtain for which projects. I'm not criticizing the paper other than that what they published was not the gist of my comment. Interestingly, the man who spoke before me works for the paper, and their use of only those two of my sentences leads one to assume they don't favor the reallocation, or maybe they become better attuned to this public's dissension with this board. The manager misunderstood my question as to whether College Avenue was a project he'd referred to as not needed anymore. He probably meant the project isn't needed in this year's budget. Judging from him and this board, listening is a lost art. Maybe it's the jet contrails or floor rides since it affects most of us. Again, I offer to apologize, even terminate my involvement if my comments generally make no sense. If they do make sense, then serious changes to this board ought to be in store.
Anyone else? Would anyone else care to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to the presentations. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first is going to be the Lake Superior Community Partnership. CEO Amy Klickner will give it to us.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to come and give you an update. I am Amy Klickner, and the Lake Superior Community Partnership CEO. We're the Economic Development Agency in Marquette County, a public-private partnership. We're also celebrating our 20th anniversary this year. So I'm just, I know you have a full agenda, so I'm going to quickly run through some statistics from 2017 and just update you on some projects we are currently working on in 2018. Just a reminder, the staff that we have at the Lake Superior Community Partnership, there's seven of us. We do have one opening right now. We just hired a new young person right out of Northern Michigan University who will be starting next week. Lois Ellis, of course, you can't see the writing on the bottom, but she's based in Dickinson County, where we provide economic development services via contract. So she is working out of Iron Mountain. I should also mention that we did just receive a grant for an AmeriCorps worker, and so if anybody knows of a young person that's looking to pursue that for the next year, we would love to hear from them. And we were also looking for another intern, as ours is graduating from Northern Michigan University in marketing, so want to get that out. Just a reminder of the government services that we provide, this is just a list, and I'm not going to go through it, but anything from working together on economic development projects, all the way through convening, advocacy, lobbying, support, and those types of things. So to 2017, we served 422 clients last year, and as you can see, there's a variety of services that we provide. The numbers will not add up to 422 because typically, when a client comes in for services, they use more than one service. So the icons around are just talking about the different things that we've assisted with, anything from retention, business finance, technical assistance, advocacy, et cetera. We work with all stages of companies, and in economic development, typically, you're going to spend most of your time, 80% of your growth comes from within. So you're going to spend most of your time with your current businesses, making sure that they are stable and growing, because as you know, or anybody that has a business with customers, it's easier and less expensive to keep a customer happy than it is to find another customer. Very similar in economic development. So we spend right about 80% of our time on retention and expansion services, about 16% in startups, and we can see, continue to see that grow each year, and only about 5% in attraction. Attraction is the most expensive, and it is the most difficult part of economic development, but we do stay in the ballgame with it as much as we can. To give you an example, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation sends out RFPs from companies looking to locate in Michigan. In 2017, we received about 55 of those. We review the criteria, and we were eligible for criteria in 3% of those. So that goes to show you the types of attraction projects that are coming through the state. We track what we aren't meeting the criteria on, and if it's something that we could change, we would. But unless I can find another 100,000 people in the 90-mile radius that we're in, interstate highway that passes through here, and some of those other types of infrastructure things that we just don't have, we aren't able to meet the criteria. The other major criteria we see in a lot are they want to locate in Wayne, Detroit, or Macomb Counties. We also break down the distribution of clients, and as you can see, it's pretty much based on population. City of Marquette and Chocalee and Marquette Township, 46% of our clients come from that area, and you can see the west end, about 35%, and the south end in the Gwin area, Gwin-Sawyer area, about 19%. A quick five-year recap, we've serviced over 2,000 clients in the last five years. The breakdown is very similar from retention, startup, and attraction, working with projects retained, projected, and impacted. Think the easiest thing to sum up 2017 is a quick top 10 list, and I won't go through all of these, but one of the things we're very proud of is the regional collaboration that's been happening in local economic development. Currently, we are providing services in both Berga and Iron Mountain, Dickinson Counties. We're working collaboratively with those communities, have a single voice when we go to Lansing, and sharing resources, making it much more effective how we provide services to clients in those three counties. Market County saw nearly $1 billion of investment last year, and we served over 3,000 clients since we started tracking, which was not 20 years ago, unfortunately. Last year saw the return of a Minneapolis flight, and this summer, we'll see the, another Detroit flight. And we had our first international speaking opportunity. I was in the, in Toronto, Canada, with the International Economic Development Corporation, speaking on a panel on economic ecosystems. I was the rural person. Everybody else was from much larger cities, but it was very, it was a great feeling to be standing up there, and you can't really see in the background with a map of the Upper Peninsula with Marquette County highlighted, in front of hundreds of colleagues of mine, telling them that Marquette County has an entrepreneurial ecosystem like no other, and that we can assist businesses in all stages here. Friday, we had our line tech graduation, which is the 15th graduating class of the electrical line technicians, topping over 400 graduates. We added data and research services to our bundle of services this year. We're seeing positive regional wealth indicators, and working on the financial side, we have two months of operating reserves right now. The end of the day, if economic development is working in your community, you'll see your regional wealth indicators in a positive and growing state. And you can see in the last five years, population is the only one, other than per capita income, that's slightly off. We're still waiting for 2017 numbers for median household income and per capita income. Those will be out in June or July. But you can see overall, Marquette County has fared very well in increases in property tax revenue, median household income, median home sales, and number of home sale pricing. To 2018, just to take a look at our budget this year, our income, we've worked really hard to diversify our income. We have investors that pay dues. We work on, we provide most of our services for low-cost, no-cost fees, and our investors allow us to be able to do that for companies. You can see we still do some fundraising. We have regional partner contracts and a few grants out there. And you can see that a majority of our dollars are spent in economic development programming. So what are we, what's happening right now in economic development? Probably one of the biggest things we're working on is the potential reopening of the Empire Mine. We will be going down to Cleveland to meet with the CEO of Cliffs on Thursday. We're very excited to be bringing a package of support to him. When he was here in February, what he asked our community for was a resolve and a support of mining. We believe we have that built into a package. We've kept that very separate from any state incentive package that will come out after, but we are going down to tell him, and I know you've seen it here at your meetings as well, and yes, the beer did get to Cleveland along with the pasties, so thank you. But we do think this is very important, 350 jobs and approximately $400 million economic impact, not including indirect or induced jobs. The Marquette County ambassadors just got back from Lansing about a week ago, thanks to the storm. Having normally about 25 or 26 of us handling a two-and-a-half-day schedule, turned out to be 12 of us. So we were lean, but we made it through all the meetings in Lansing. A lot of the discussion there was about the reopening of the mine, and of course, Line 5 and its impact on the state of Michigan, but also reminding them how important Line 5 and what it has, the propane that it comes through, is 65% in the, the propane in the Upper Peninsula, as well as Enbridge being a large taxpayer and a large electric user in the, in the southern part of the Upper Peninsula. We are working on economic impact studies. We are going to start working with Travel Marquette, and we're going to do a, our first one, we're picking a few of the events for the year, so that we can start working on, you know, getting a basis for how to do that, what's the best way to do that, have a consistent template, so that we can start being able to share those numbers locally. The UP Energy Summit is coming in May, and we play a back-office role to that. That's always a big event in Marquette, just because energy is so important to economic development, and we have had challenges in the past. And lastly, we hear from businesses every day about their need for talent. I don't care if you're a janitor, or physician, or anywhere in between, people are looking for talent. So one of the things that we've done is, we've created a whole strategy to help our businesses and our clients around finding people, and one of the things we did through our economic modeling system was be able to purchase what's called... our economic modeling system was be able to purchase what's called workforce insights. And that data and that tool, we are able to work with companies who are doing recruitment to show where their best locations are to recruit these folks, and if these folks have ties back to the Upper Peninsula. We know we are more successful recruiting someone back if they have a tie, and this tool allows us to say, hey, you should be here, looking in Minneapolis, not in Tulsa. You should be in Chicago, not somewhere in Arizona. And so we believe these tools are going to help our businesses be more successful in their search for talent. Just a quick update on 2017, closing that out, and what's happening in 2018, and happy to answer any questions, but definitely appreciate the time this evening.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioners? Commissioner Reynolds?
So as far as the economic impact study that you're doing with Travel Marquette, are you going to pick like, let's say, the Fourth of July? I'm trying, I've been interested in this in quite some time, because right now, we currently do most of our numbers based on tourism and not actually the people in the city that are going to these events, let's say, if they're from Chocolay or Marquette or they're citizens. So I'd be interested for them to be included in the discussion of how many people are going to those kind of things that are local citizens.
Yep, and that's a good point. We did our first kind of trial run with the Hiawatha Music Festival earlier this year from their last event, and then, I'm not sure where we've landed yet on which one we're picking next, but eventually we want to do them all, so that we have that information and we can just update it every year, but get to know. But it also is important to know and understand. So Hiawatha was a challenge like that, too, because it draws a lot of people, but they're not in a hotel. You know, what are they spending? What, you know, so that was a challenge, but I think we're working through being able to figure out to help with numbers that you're asking for. You're welcome.
Amy, you mentioned that your organization works with people in Berga County and Dickinson County. Do you work with their economic development organizations there, or just, they may not even have them, I'm not sure?
Actually, we helped them both create their economic development organization there, so that they would be able to, they had lost their economic developer in Dickinson a couple of years ago, and so we've been working with them for a few years to reestablish that in more of a, more of a design like the partnership is here. So that's been very, very successful. And Berga didn't have its own EDC, it was just kind of on the shelf, so they reactivated theirs, and then hired us to help them write their strategic plans, and then eventually just contract with us for services, because they don't need a full-time person in Berga.
Okay. Do you do Delta County at all, or they have their own?
They have their own. The door is open, the conversation's been had, that if there's ways that we can work closer together in any of the counties, we need to be doing that, and we need to be sharing resources.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming here. Your organization does a lot of valuable work in the area. We hope you continue to do so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming. Okay, our next presentation of the evening is going to be the Harbor Advisory Committee. We have Chairman Lynn Van Welseners here. Lynn?
It should, it should, it should come up in a few minutes. So there we go. That was quick, right? I am going to present 2017 for the Harbor Advisory Committee. We have seven, seven members that serve three-year terms. Currently, we have only three members and four vacancies. We had nine meetings this year, and our purpose is basically to advise the City Commission on the shoreline and offshore waters near Marquette with an emphasis on the harbor and waterfront development regarding both pleasure craft and commercial vessels, mooring fields, and launch facilities. Basically, we help with the shoreline. Our meetings are the third Tuesday of every month at 5:15 in the Citizens Forum in Lakeview Arena, except in November and December. We hold those on the second Tuesday. I think the holidays get in the way. We actually had a really busy 2016. Our 2017 was a little bit slower. We actually recommended the 2018 seasonal marina rate structure, and we have a bunch of stuff coming up in the new year. We're looking at reviewing strategic priorities in the Harbor Master Plan, which is recently started. We're going to engage in the waterfront use policies, so a lot of the kayaking outfitters, the non-motorized launches, the Hiawatha Water Trail, those are all things that we'll be looking at, in addition to anything that involves motorized or non-motorized watercraft, including the O.R.D.O.C. Some issues and discussion that we have had, and will continue to have, are regarding the future Lakes Superior waterfront access and/or use. So a lot of, a lot of those non-motorized watercraft that we're seeing more and more of, it, just in the harbor, in the area, community recreational use of the waterfront, commercial watercraft, and a lot of the winter recreational trends that we're starting to see that may be in the area. So those are all things that we'll be discussing. And our other one is committee membership and recruitment, which I know is across the That was my short, sweet presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
Lynn, question. How do we, how do we ramp up the number of people in the committee? What do we do? How do we make that happen?
I don't know the answer to that, sir. We have, we have actually tried multiple ways to ramp up the number of people, but I know we do have a new person coming on the committee. However, we have another person that termed out. So we're back down to three as well. You know, we've tried public announcements, we've tried other ways, we've tried actually asking people, but a lot of the people that we speak with from that committee are boaters, and they're not always from Marquette. So that, that's part of the issue.
I'm looking at the mission statement, and I'm kind of rolling the value of that committee against other committees we appoint, and I think you can probably make the argument that next to the Planning Commission and the BZ, Harbor is the major player, because we are a port community. You look at everything that's on your laundry list that you have a piece of, that's huge.
Yes, sir, it is.
And it just, I find it surprising that we don't find people in the community that are willing to step up and look at our lakeshore, not just in terms of marinas, which is the least of the things they do. They're not a marina committee. They really are involved with the entire breadth of the Lake Superior Shore, as is within the city of Marquette. And as you pointed out, there's a number of very high-profile projects that are coming up that are part of that. So I'll see what-
We're going to have a, we're going to have a busy 2018, so anyone that's interested, we're looking for new members.
Well, we need some more horses.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Can feel a little bit thankless, Seth, when you put that much work into it and you kind of spin in your wheels, don't have a full board. I really appreciate what you guys are doing there for the, for the Harbor and everything else that it entails. I guess one thing I might suggest is that just because a person's time does ramp out or end at the six-year term, if they've run through two terms, they can still sit on the, on the board with you and be a part of that, until it would come time for them to be replaced by somebody coming in. So I would encourage you to go after those guys and try and get them to stick around a little bit longer if they can. The experience is obviously something that you hate to lose if that's, you know, a part of the value that comes with those people that have been there for those, those two terms. Stick with it, fill those spots, get, go and start asking people, knock on some doors, because it's great, it's a great committee, and I look forward to coming and actually sitting in on some of your meetings. I've been looking forward to that since I've been appointed here, and I'll see you soon.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Lynn, well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. We hope you get some members. Yeah, it could be a very exciting committee to be on, so let's hope some people show up.
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, our next item is the Consent Agenda. Mr. Verito, you wish to speak to us on this?
Thanks, Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge Street, Marquette. These are my opinions. Friday, I wrote the manager's office, quote, "The resolution on the consent agenda 6E appears as if it's a business item, not a consent item. Why isn't this under business? Provided drawings do not clear, indicate clearly enough exactly where the parcel is. Could you please email a more accurate description and depiction, so I have time to prepare a comment if necessary? Mike has been asked far too many times to please provide adequate depictions," end quote. The manager's assistant replied, "The agenda is set by the city manager and the mayor, and this item meets the criteria for the consent agenda," end quote. This doesn't address why the item wasn't under old business, or more importantly, where the parcel is. My second inquiry to this effect went unanswered, so I'm unsure as to whether this comment is pertinent. We know for sure, though, that the male assistant has caused wasted meeting time. The manager has ignored numerous requests to provide adequate depictions of where his proposals are located, to assure that business items, and to assure that business items don't appear under the consent agenda. All we know from the drawings and descriptions is that Prescott Road lies to the south, and yes, I do recall this wetland from a prior meeting. Before construction of the new hospital began, this board was proactively warned to preserve the wetland along the property's north edge, a small ecosystem unto itself. The commission answered by denuding the entire site. Hundreds of frogs were killed in an utter sin, regardless of whether the border has reclaimed itself somewhat. In fact, one commissioner insulted the public by making a joke of it on July 11, 2016. Prescott Road is nowhere near the future hospital site. Any replacement wetland ought to occur as close to the affected property as possible, and on land that's not currently a wetland or in natural condition, especially wooded. Retaining the north hospital boundary lessens the impact of replacement needed, of replacement wetlands needed, thus should be part of this discussion. It was wetland previously, in the best possible location, in the best possible condition, and not in the way of any but a small part of the construction zone. Natural wetlands are better than ones created by man. The only description is provided in the area under discussion lies north of Prescott Road with thence this and thence that, followed by township and range figures. Even this item was covered previous, even though this item was covered previously, we needed a decent depiction in tonight's packet. We were entitled to know, so we can comment ahead of the vote. You're asked to remove 6E from the consent agenda to be added to a May agenda with an adequate jawing and, if possible, replacement wetlands closer to the hospital site. Oops, the manager replied in a very kind email at 5:00 PM, too late. But if anything is pertinent based on that, it'll be presented at the next meeting.
Okay, Commissioners, we have the consent agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to approve? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plord?
Second.
Squires a roll call vote because of resolutions contained within. City Clerk, please?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. That passes 6-0. Next, we move to new business. We have three items on new business tonight. The first item is the Carl Zuger Scenic Overlook. City Clerk, could you please give us some background on that?
Thank you, sir. In October of 2017, the Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee approached staff requesting consideration to name the new scenic overlook at Father Marquette Park in honor of former Community Services Director Carl Zuger. Mr. Zuger worked directly with the Marquette Beautification Committee on the Father Marquette Park improvement project that resulted in a $140,000 Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund grant. The project is scheduled to be completed this summer. In his time as director, Carl was passionate about public art and Father Marquette Park in particular, and was instrumental in restoration of the reliefs and cleaning the statue. The portion of the project Carl has been most excited about is the emphasis of the view of Lake Superior to the south of the park. Per City Commission Policy 2005-01, naming parks and recreation facilities, the request was forwarded to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. At their March 2018 meeting, the board reviewed the request with supporting documentation. After discussion, the board motioned to support the request to name the element the Carl G. Zuger Scenic Overlook. The motion passed unanimously. Staff would like to convey their appreciation to Carl Zuger. It was an honor to work with Mr. Zuger on this and many other projects throughout the city. He is a selfless, passionate, energetic civil servant who worked tirelessly for the betterment of the community during his time as Community Services Director. Fiscal effect? No fiscal effect with this action. Recommendation? Approve the request from the Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee, Inc., to name the overlook at Father Marquette Park, Carl G. Zuger Scenic Overlook. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, you wish to speak to this?
I need to say my name again. Emily Lewis, 501 East Ridge Street. I'm a member of the Marquette Beautification Committee, and we started this project long ago. I was president at the time. And as Jerry said, we, he was very instrumental in getting this whole project forward. The one thing that I remember over and over again, walking that park over and over again, trying to figure out what, how we were going to configure it, how were you going to make it handicap accessible, he would always stop at this one spot and say, "This is the spot. We have to have like an observation deck, or a bench, or a picnic table, because you can see the water from here, and you can see the statue." So I think it's quite fitting that we honor him by naming that. And I must say, the park will be completed. I think John can attest to that. It will be completed this summer. We are dedicating it on July 15. We will then dedicate Tammy's Garden, and I'm sure the Carl Zuger, if that gets passed tonight. And it is also the committee's 40th anniversary as a committee, so we're going to have a celebration down on the boardwalk afterwards. So I think it's at 2:00. Barb's been in charge of this, that part of the thing. I'm more the fundraising end of it. So I just want to thank you for all your support over the years, and this project is going to be completed, so.
John, Mr. Swenson, you had something to, you have a letter to contribute?
Yeah, so I guess maybe I'd start by thanking the Beautification Committee for kind of spearheading this. Carl meant a lot to all of us, and he was really kind of a mentor to the Community Services staff. He had this, this feared red pen that he kept in his desk, and he'd always review any documents that went out, and there was often some red ink on those papers. The one thing that I, that I always remember, and, and I'm already messing it up, is that the word "I" was usually the first thing that was scratched out on those sheets. So Carl embodied really the, the emphasis of public service without self. So that is something that we've strived to carry on, you know, and now, and going forward. And it's a difficult thing to do as human beings. But I talked with Carl about this dedication, and, and he kind of pointed out that, you know, he didn't work his career to be, to be recognized. He did it for the community. And I said that I really, really respected that, but too bad, we're going to try and get this done anyway, so. But he came around, and he wrote a little letter that I'd like to read to you. "I am humbled by this honor. This project was one which required special attention and responsibility. At first, the objective was to provide access to the Father Marquette statue regardless of one's physical limitation. As staff delved into the project, it became much more. It is a gateway, a place to pause in life and reflect and meditate. It is a place where the-" the aged eyes sees the past, and the imaginative child's eye sees the future. It is a portal which connects nature and the community's soul. In fact, it is really a location where it all began. As a public servant, we are committed to serve without the intention of being recognized, but moreover, to make a difference. I served with the mantra of serving both nature and the community. It was I was not always successful, but such is life. I would like to thank the beautification committee for their vision, trust, and for bestowing me with this great honor. The City Commission and the administration for their tireless support of leadership. The staff who worked countless hours to recognize the mantra of serving both nature and the community. And most importantly, the community who gave me this precious gift to serve." So with that, we hope you move forward with this and bestow this honor on Carl. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, we need a motion for this, please. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Your honor, I'd like to move to approve the requests from the Marquette Beautification and Restoration Committee to name the overlook at Father Marquette the Carl G. Zugger Scenic Overlook.
So there's a second. Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I kind of asked the mayor if I could make that motion and be recognized for it, because I have known Carl a very long time. I can think of no finer individual. I can I cannot think of anyone that sets a better example for everybody in this city of selfish or selfless, rather, activity, of leadership, of getting things done, of working so well with people. Carl is just somebody that was always there and always able to make it happen. And those people are so very few and far between. I consider Carl to be a friend of many years, and I think this is a wonderful way to to recognize him as a human being, and also certainly how hit that relationship of nature and Father Marquette and the city of Marquette. Thank you.
Mr. Schlegel, anything?
I don't know if I could say anything that's going to add to something so well put. Thank you, Mayor Protem Stonehouse. When I first got interested in serving for the city, I was on Prescott Advisory Committee, and after my first year there, I think it was Carl's first year when he came in and took over the role. And he has no idea, but I just want to make it known how important his time was, working with him, encouraging us volunteers to go ahead and do things, whether it be the handicap accessible pathway out at Prescott, or multitude of other different projects that we worked on together. It was just it made our volunteering hours so much more enjoyable, because he was so passionate about what he did. And I thank him for that, and and I think that this is just a fitting tribute to Carl and his service, and I'm very excited to be a part of it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
I just wanted to also echo Commissioner Stonehouse. Carl was one of the first city staff members that I remember when I was elected to this position, and Carl was always there and always very helpful, and I appreciated that he would guide me when I would have issues of park-related issues. I also wanted to thank the beautification committee, and thank you, John, for all the work that you are doing in trying to fill Carl's shoes as well. That letter was very beautiful and thoughtful from Carl. That's all.
Thank you. I think this dedication to Carl is, you know, a very good thing to be doing. Carl Carl had a lot of vision. Carl has a lot of vision. My time on the commission, I got to know him, and he was always a person who worked hard for the organization. And he did. He got things done. And this this is a tribute to him. He deserves it. A lot of this is because of his work. So I'm going to vote for this, obviously. Anyone else? If seeing no more discussion, we're going to vote all those in favor. Please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. That carries six zero. Thank you. Okay, our next new business item is the Recreation Master Plan. City clerk, could you give us that background, please?
Thank you, sir. The city's five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan and associated citizen survey serves as the guiding document for recreation policies and capital improvements within the park system. The plan also is mandatory in order to apply for most state grant programs. The City Commission approved the budget of $70,000 to update the five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan, including the citizen survey. The Master Plan Ad Hoc Steering Committee, MPAHC, was formed to guide the process. Staff prepared the request for proposals for a planning consultant, and after committee review, advertised. The first round resulted in no proposals, so it was advertised again with adjusted timelines and sent directly to all known planning firms. The second round of proposals were due on April 17, 2018. Two proposals were received, one from Dick Horton Consulting and the other from the Central Upper Peninsula Planning and Development Regional Commission, or QPAD. The MPAHC has reviewed the proposals based on relative experience of personnel, experience in preparing comparable updates in comparable communities, cost, experience in other kinds of planning, references, and office location. Based upon the scoring criteria, the following composite score was arrived. Firm Dick Horton Consulting from Kansas and Houghton, Michigan, the cost was $70,000, and the score was 849. The QPAD proposal location was in Escanaba, Michigan. The cost was $67,995 slash $70,000, and the score was 655. Dick Horton has conducted the last two revisions of Marquette's Recreation Master Plan. His proposal includes working with Pat Coleman of North of 45 LLC, Sarah R. Kirk of SRP Design Studio LLC, and Chris Tathan and Jason Morado of the ETC Institute for the Citizen Survey. The MPAHC made the motion at their April 19, 2018 meeting to recommend the City Commission approve Dick Horton Consulting as the most qualified firm to conduct the revision of Marquette's five-year Recreation Master Plan and Citizen Survey for a not-to-exceed fee of $70,000. Community services and community development staff support this recommendation. The fiscal effect? The City Commission approved the budget, including $70,000 for this plan. Recommendation: Approve the Dick Horton Consulting proposal with a not-to-exceed fee of $70,000 to conduct the five-year Recreation Master Plan and Citizen Survey revision, and direct the city attorney to develop a professional services agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Mr. Verito, you wish to address us on this?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. This chair is the best at remembering to call us up than anyone we've had in 20 years. He's number one when it comes to that. There's no problem with evaluating other cities' recreational philosophies. In fact, it's encouraged. The designers of our recreation plan are urged to realize that Marquette is unique because of our community lakeshore and topography that is conducive to outstanding recreational opportunities above and beyond most other cities, especially west east of the Mississippi. The design group may well employ this understanding. The designers are asked, and are already likely are, to incorporate only the elements of other cities' designs that are conducive to our lakeshore and trails network, but to also innovate based on Marquette's unique natural attributes, such that other cities will use us as a model for their recreational master plans. The most important design feature aside from safety factors is to keep the indigenous nature as is everywhere possible. Thin trees and grass landscaping aren't as aesthetic and require more costly maintenance. An example of what not to do occurred at South Beach Park, where the manager hacked away every tree, which negatively impacted not only the park, but the North Country Trail. In implementing this Recreation Master Plan, the commission is urged to avoid wasting public dollars to leave us with less than what we had, and to realize that a large percentage of us live here because nature prevails more than most anyplace else. Let us retain our natural character instead of trying so hard to be like every place else. Hence the condition of South Beach Park.
Commissioners, we need a motion. Would somebody care to make a motion to approve this item? Commissioner Plord?
I move that we approve the Dick Horton Consulting proposal with a not-to-exceed fee of $70,000 to conduct the five-year Recreation Master Plan and citizen's survey revision, and direct the city attorney to develop a professional service agreement.
Someone care to second this? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Any comments? Commissioner Plord?
Just to say that the Dick Horton Consulting was the most comprehensive, hence a score of 849. Pretty much answered the specs that we asked for. QPAD did not. And it's it's difficult to approve somebody who doesn't want to answer the specs that we require here. And so that's why Dick Horton was recommended, and I agree with that, and that's why I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, anything? I feel okay with this selecting Horton Consulting. I believe they have done work for the city in the past, and seem to have gone well. So the vote, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed. Carries six zero. Okay, our last new business item of the evening, MMA Walk Behind Traffic Marking Painting Machine. City clerk, please.
Thank you, sir. City traffic markings require annual repainting when using waterborne paint. The harsh winters and winter maintenance operations remove most of the paint by spring. The Department of Public Works has contracted out these services in recent years. City staff has also determined that contracting these services has not been cost-effective or provided a quality product in a timely manner for the city intersection traffic markings. As a result, the intersection traffic markings will be moved back in-house. The long line, center lines, lane lines, work has worked out and will continue to be outsourced. In order to utilize a non-waterborne product, city staff requested an MMA Walk Behind Traffic Marking Painting Machine to perform the painting in-house. Bid documents were advertised and sent to three regional manufacturers of the specialized painting equipment. Two vendors responded to the request as summarized below. Of the two bids received, one did not meet specifications. The lowest bid received, N-DYSIS, did not meet specification and did not provide the requested demonstration. Epic Solutions of Fargo, North Dakota met all bid specifications as required and provided an onsite demonstration. List of vendors: Epic Solutions of Fargo, North Dakota. The bid as checked was $34,048.45. And N-DYSIS of Rogers, Minnesota. The bid as checked was $32,892 and did not meet specifications. Fiscal effect? The Motor Pool Fund Capital Outlay Budget for fiscal year 1718 contains $35,000 for this purchase. Recommendation: Approve the purchase of a Titan MMA 98-2 Walk Behind Traffic Marking Painting Machine from Epic Solutions of Fargo, North Dakota in an amount not to exceed $34,048.45. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. We need a motion for this item. Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the purchase of a Titan MMA 98-2 Walk Behind Traffic Marking Painting Machine from Epic Solutions of Fargo, North Dakota in an amount not to exceed
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Discussion, any? Commissioner Smith?
This is one of the things when I first came on the commission that I was made aware of, and it sounded like a good investment for future reference. If someone in the community is looking for a business idea, this may be something to consider, because it's a high need in the UP, not just in Marquette.
Commissioner Schlegel, anything?
I just glad to see that we're going to be able to use higher-quality products and hopefully have longer lifespans for our markings that we're putting out each season.
Commissioner Plord?
Thank you, your honor. I just want to say that I've been involved with and have received more than I expected communication about this particular subject, and a number of people have said that they would like to see the city of Marquette have their own machine and paint, be able to do these lines in a timely manner, based on the when we need to, and, you know, the weather requires that we can't, then we don't. But we have all year to do it, and we do it when the city people believe that it's the right time to do it. And it also will save money. So that's why I'm supporting this. A fair amount of support. I was surprised out in the public for this.
Thank you. I personally will be happy to see lines put down on the streets before, like, the end of September, middle of October, before it gets snowed on. So that's the last couple of years, they get them on at the end of summer. So hopefully, we'll get them down earlier, and people can actually see them. We shall vote on this. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. That also carries six zero. We now come to our second and final public comment of the evening. Again, time to address the commission. You got three minutes. I'm going to open public comment. Anybody wish to address the commission?
Alice Robinson. I live at 501 Albert Street. I was thinking that was great, but with what's been going on down there lately, I have a question about it. What are we going to have to do to make the city understand we don't want those six-story condos in our backyard? We're a single-family neighborhood, and we want to stay that way. If these condos go up and we sit at our kitchen table, I live on the dead end of Albert, and my neighbor lives on the cul-de-sac part, are they going to run those streets through? And when we sit in our kitchens, when those those buildings go up, that's all we're going to see out our window, besides all the transient and the extra traffic. I why did they cancel tomorrow night's meeting? It took us five, six, I don't know how many years to get them to tear that mess down. We had people going in there with pizzas to eat. We had animals burrowed underneath there, ruining our gardens in the spring, holes in the roof. You never knew, you know, who was coming in and out there, waiting for somebody to get killed when the rest of the building collapsed. We do not want those condos, and I don't know what we're going to have to do to convince the city of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? To the city clerk, please. You have to give it to the city clerk. The city clerk. Didn't they hand it all? Yes.
I'm Valerie Olson, 116 Hillcrest Trail, Marquette. I just wanted to bring up a couple of additional points regarding this issue of fluoridation. I'm urging each of you, if you haven't already, please, please go to fluoridealert.org. Please read the scientific studies. We have a real problem with sorting out issues like this when we have supposed experts telling us fluoridation is safe, but there's no science behind that statement. No long-term scientific studies have been done to prove safety, not to our children, not to infants, our vulnerable populations, and now we know that this is cumulative in the brains of children. And what's difficult is, we don't see immediate effects from people drinking fluoridated water. What we know is, when young boys who are drinking fluoridated water for the first few years of life, their risk when they reach their twenties is at least double for bone cancer. Okay, that's a big deal. And when we make a decision to add a medication, which the FDA states fluoride is categorized as an unapproved drug, we're medicating the water supply, and those who have done their homework, those who have gone and looked at the science, and I can assure you that most dentists do not know the science. My father was a dentist, and he was typically trusting the American Dental Association. That does not mean that they're what they advocate is rooted in science. We have hundreds of studies. If you would please, please take the time to go to fluoridealert.org. Any of you who have children or grandchildren, you really want to know the truth about this. And we have over 300 communities that have discontinued fluoride. Ninety-seven percent of Europe has discontinued it. The bottom line is, because there's not one safety study, not for any of these vulnerable groups, we can't continue to add this substance without safety studies. That's wrong. So I urge you, please, go to the website, look at the studies. So I urge you, please, go to the website, look at the studies. Some of you who are really interested, The Fluoride Deception is an amazing book by a wonderful journalist who took 10 years to glean out all the evidence about what began fluoridation in the first place. And if you look at a book like that, you'll understand it was so political and so motivated by money because the companies who are selling us their industrial waste product, that spares them from disposing of it as a hazardous waste. How convenient. And this is true. You can get the book, Fluoride Deception, you can go look on the website. So please do your homework for the sake of your children, your grandchildren, this community. You've been entrusted with making good decisions for the people of this community. You cannot trust what you hear from others who may not have done their homework and looked at the science. And that is the case with many organizations. And my final comment is the American Medical Association, interestingly enough, has said, "We have not done safety studies to conclude that this is a safe practice." Wow, you know? We need to pay attention to that, so please, please go forward and...
Time's up.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Brum. I live at 404 East Magnetic. Yesterday afternoon at 3:00 p.m., I met with a group of people at the site of the old Lake Shore Incorporated property. We had one common theme in mind, which is we didn't want them building two-five-story condominium buildings, which for sake of brevity, I will continue to refer to as Godzilla condominiums. Godzilla condominiums are, if you go back to the early 1950s Godzilla movies, whenever he went into a village of small, single-family residences, they were destroyed completely, and he just kept walking on and on and on. The gist of what we concluded, you can read in the really good story that the W L U C TV people did, and I must compliment the Mining Journal as well for bringing this up just in a timely manner. And I'm not a cynic, but I wonder if maybe some of the reason why they withdrew from the hearing tomorrow night was they wanted to wait till the issue had died down a little bit, and maybe people weren't as riled up as they are. People are riled up, they're going to continue to be riled up. They're trying to put in 96 apartments in an area no bigger than three acres. What they're going to do is create 96 dissatisfied people because what they're going to promise them is the lake is right across the street. What they're not going to promise them is adequate parking. If you read their submission to the planning commission, they admit they're short about 100 parking spots. That puts the east side of town at risk for parking, street parking, and it puts our public safety people at risk because they're going to have to navigate those streets. And right now, if you try to get SUV down Magnetic Street with their vehicle on either side, you're basically trying to play reverse bumper cars, and that we accept because Magnetic Street was made narrow, and we accept it. But we're going to put people into a situation where they've been promised access to the beach. We walked 17 people across Lake Shore Boulevard yesterday, and the only way we could do it safely is I am standing there waving my arms, and fortunately, I was wearing a red coat, and people saw me, and they stopped. That's 17 people, and they're laughing back there because it actually happened exactly that way. They're going to be promised this nirvana, you can walk across the beach with your cup from Starbucks. The short answer to that is you're going to be playing dodgem cars in that parking lot, and when you try to cross Lake Shore Boulevard, not everybody's going to be accommodating. And furthermore, you're not going to find the lake as welcoming as the pictures that you've seen of it because those pictures are taken the one day out of the summer that the lake looks perfect. So we're not going to go away just because they pulled the agenda item from the planning commission. We're going to be back, and I would encourage everyone to consider that this is not a good idea, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Millie White. I live at 500 Albert Street, about a spit from where they're trying to build this Godzilla monstrosity. I understand the need for some capitalist deep pockets from Chicago to develop their properties, but I would urge them, beg them. My son was on the Facebook thing, someone told me, and his big sister saw him from Ann Arbor. We bought our house 10 years ago at 500 Albert because my little buddy could run around and play in what was virtually a cul-de-sac, and I could see him from my window, from my front porch. I don't want that to go away. All his friends want to come over and play at our house because it's relatively safe, and they can play all around that place. They like to go snow mountaineering on the big piles of snow that get shoveled up there in the winter. I just hope that they can go back, number one, come up with a lower-profile building. Number two, make it prettier. Try to imitate what the people that renovated the orphanage did. Make it fit with the neighborhood. This is a single-family neighborhood. It is not downtown, and it's not Founder's Landing. It is not commercial. Please, pretty please, keep it family-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Chapert, 350 East Ridge Street, Marquette. These are my opinions. Thank you very much to the previous speakers. April 9th, Mr. Campana opted not to respond to my assertions that he misled the audience by publicly suggesting I'm not the type of person to apologize. Examples to the contrary were too numerous for him to refute. Two weeks' worth of inquiry with the manager's office resulted in no information as to whether I owe the tech an apology. The north camera looks as if it swivels, and in fact does, and one would assume it zooms. Close-ups were still not provided April 9th, even though I was assured they would be after years of numerous requests as dated on record. The manager assured me they'd be tonight, but still no. All they did was adjust the north camera so people in wheelchairs can be seen on TV. Why wasn't I able to find out what the camera's capabilities are? If anyone owes the technician an apology, it's the manager. April 9th and tonight, I again offered to apologize profusely to anyone whom I've unduly blamed in the past 20 years. Any member, past or present, is dared to accept this challenge. A clue is to review the times I became the most animated or most severely insulted members' integrities down to their innermost cores. In those cases, I'd owe the deepest apologies. Two current members, Mistress Campana and Stonehouse, the so-called mayor and pro tem no less, most perfectly fit the bill. My conscience does bother me some about the chair because I'm unsure as to whether our differences are the result of a disability or him trying to mess with my mind. No one will be ridiculed in here on account of a disability. We just need to know so long as it affects your performances in the cases of the chair and Mr. Frazier. Otherwise, it's none of our business. If they opt to conceal the reasons for their ill performances, they're then subject to ridicule without apology. In Mr. Stonehouse's case, he's been caught on three alleged lies, the Coast Guard rescue lie, the smoke-off-the-boat lie, and the taking notes-on-verito comments lie. Of course, when checkmated, he answered with silence all three times, just as Mr. Campana did when checkmated April 9th. Neither man dared to respond, knowing he'd be inundated with details to the contrary at a subsequent meeting. Mr. Plort appears to listen, and he responds to public comment better than the rest, although I've wondered why he misinterpreted many of my comments a while back. Of concern is the promise he made to us over a year ago that he'd mentioned in his closing comments the concerns that constituents raised with him between meetings. It's impossible to imagine that over the course of many months, very few mentioned anything worth sharing to him. This is in no way an attack against Mr. Plort. Maybe people only discuss sports with him, which isn't his fault. The point is our residents are apparently wasting this opportunity. If people want to divulge their concerns to him, perhaps he can share his insight on how our Packers might reach the Super Bowl this season. And again, thank you very much, people. There'll be plenty to be said on that condo in the future meetings.
Anyone else?
Alice Reynolds, 515 East Arch Street, Marquette. I actually wasn't coming here to speak, I just was going to kind of hear what other people were saying, but through all of this, seeing things on Facebook and for the condos that are proposed, I was actually involved with the last time that condos were going to be built down there. There was, they were supposedly going to be three stories high. I was connected to the person who was planning the condos. I don't know how many of you remember that was planning on happening, the founder building was still there. He went through a lot of work, he got a PUD for it, and the commission told him that he could only have three stories, and I was a part of the planning for the condos. I was in there with him. So I'm curious about why they're five stories now and why you're even looking at that after what he went through, having to keep it at three stories, and he was not allowed to go higher. I remember that was a requirement. So I'm a little curious why they're five. I live near the neighborhood, I'm fine with something going in there that would be wonderful, the foundry. My complaint when he was planning on doing these was that the foundry had graffiti on it. It was an awful-looking building. I went into it with him. It did need to be torn down, but what you, and it wasn't this commission, but what you accepted was something that would be lower and much better-looking. I mean, this thing, this thing is kind of a monstrosity, and I don't go against a lot of things that are happening in Marquette. I'm related three generations back to one of the founders of this town, and I guess I'm not sure that Peter White would be approving of this. I just have to share with you. When he came here, he had a vision for the city, and I don't believe that he and all the other founders that started this, Longyear and Grave Rett and all of those people, I just, I can't see them feeling comfortable with what is being planned in that area. So just my thoughts, but I hope you look really carefully at this before. And you have a lot of people in the city that are upset about this, so I hope at some point that matters. I know things haven't mattered before, and things went through without people in the public being listened to. There are a lot of very intelligent people in this community, very intelligent, so I hope that you just listen to them before you go forward with something that you can't go back on once it starts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alice Robinson, 501 Albert Street. There were two things that I forgot to mention. When they first started tearing down the buildings down there, they had wipes...
Excuse me, Alice? You spoke earlier on this public comment.
I did not use...
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
No. You can only speak...
Can I tell you that the ground is contaminated or...
We can only have one, three minutes from each person. If somebody else wants to speak, fine, who hasn't spoken? I mean, we'd love to hear your comments, but we have to be fair to...
Brian Miller, 712 Chippewa Square. I'm Brian G. Miller, not Brian E. Miller, I know there's some confusion about that. With regards to the condos, definitely against them. I survey all my patients, I see a fair number of patients every week. Every single one that I know is opposed. Too big, too high, too ugly, too many people. Onto the fluoride issue that Val talked about. I've been in healthcare for 40 years. I know science. I won the science award in my high school, I won the science award in my grammar school. I've read the science. I would not put any fluoride in my body that is anything in excess of what nature provides up to that level. To deal, the main reason fluoride is put in the water supply, it's an economic and political issue, like she said. In terms of the science, it's their prevention of dental caries, which can be taken care of with fluoride toothpaste, staying away from sugar, eating healthy diet, done, no problem. The downside, decrease in IQs. Both the Soviets and the Nazis put it in their POW's water supplies. It made them dull, complacent, less likely to escape. That should say something right there, okay? But decrease in IQs, when I read it, there were 27 studies in six different countries. Val said she's found 37 studies. I read a 200-page monograph on the decrease in fertility caused by fluoride. In fact, in third-world countries where they don't have central water supplies, they're using fluoridized salt, not iodized salt, fluoridized salt, to help in population control. Anything that decreases fertility decreases your health. Thyroid issues, I see those across the board. Hypothyroidism is epidemic. Fluoride is a very reactive chemical that binds to those iodine receptor sites. You know what happens when someone's thyroid doesn't work well? They become a cretin. They become mentally retarded. Do you want to have a legacy? You can save money not putting fluoride in the water, you can put out public health announcements, you could have a clinic. When I was a kid, they had clinics about how to brush your teeth and so on. The downsides, the cancer, but the thyroid is a big issue. Many health problems are connected to that. Heart problems, a whole range of metabolic problems, but to me, the IQ is a big thing. IQs are dropping in this country. We're getting dumber. There are a number of reasons for it, but fluoride is one of it. Look at the statistics, we are getting dumber. Look in the news, you see the evidence of it. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close this public comment. We're going to move to comments from the commission. Commissioner Reynolds?
Sure, I'll start. I'm kind of disappointed that the two speakers that I was going to address beyond the part of Picnic Rocks have left. I am interested into what Mrs. Roberts indicated with the stop sign situation. I continue to find myself having a hard time pulling out of that spot, and I thought of this before, and I remember bringing it up to the previous city manager, but I don't know if anybody else would be interested in looking at this, but I agree with her statement. Second, to Mr. Luttenberger, the lighthouse. Well, technically, you can't go on it because it's not open because we needed that money to get it open. So that is what the city manager is working on, taking that money to get that open so you can legally go on it, and you won't be kicked off by the cops anymore. It was really hard to keep my mouth shut for an hour and a half just now about the Picnic Rock condos, sitting up here and feeling like I'm being yelled at. I think we are, I know that I'm listening. I know that I've gotten emails, phone calls, stopped at the grocery store, I got stopped at the brewery while I was dropping my daughter off to my husband. That's where he works, just to be clear. So I wasn't dropping off the bar. But I've constantly been stopped, and I am listening to your concerns. I don't think that they're wrong, but it doesn't come to us first. It goes to the planning commission first. The first time you all heard about it and read about it on Facebook was the first time I heard about it and read about it on Facebook. So the channels of operation are the planning commission first, and then we get presented with that information. The planning commission can determine what aesthetically could happen to it anyways at any point. I don't know why it was rescheduled. I understood that they had a conflict of time, but just so you know, you can continue to, I will, if you email me, I'll try to keep you updated with if it gets rescheduled and to win. Other than that, I want you all to keep contacting us about it because I need to know how you feel. Just don't think that we're not listening, at least I am.
Thank you. Commissioner Plort?
I'd also like to continue to kind of set the record straight a little bit. Yes, we are, we as a commission are not building condos. In fact, we have nothing yet to consider. The plan is out there, as Commissioner Reynolds said, it was, the story broke before we even had a chance to look at it, nothing's been approved. Now, it's possible that it's been tabled, or the meeting has been canceled yesterday or tomorrow because there's some controversy, but I doubt that. What I know about the planning commission, my guess is they're going for more information because people have expressed a lot of concerns about it. I'm also listening, I'm also interested in the concerns. I heard everybody and what they said, and I know what the references you're talking about are, and so it's obvious it's going to be a very interesting subject. For my part, I would like to put something there that would bring some more tax money into the city, but not the kind of plan that I've seen so far, not at all. But just to let you know, we are not building the condos, as has been expressed. Also, I'm kind of disappointed that Mr. Luttenberger is not here because I'd like to set the record straight with him. He was never told we didn't have the money for the special election. What he was told was that, especially by me and... What he was told was that, especially by me, in my own personal opinion, and what I said in the meeting was, I could not in good conscience spend the money, the $22,000 that the city clerk mentioned for the cost of that election, to be, to make the choices to fill the city commission. It wasn't necessary to spend that money, and in my opinion, we had better places to spend that money. Mr. Luttenberger disagrees, that's fine. That's okay. But he's also incorrect when he says that two people are on the commission that were not elected or voted for. I had many, many people speak in favor of Commissioner Smith. I had many, many people speak in favor of Commissioner Schlegel. No one spoke to me as in opposition to Commissioner Smith. No one spoke to me in opposition to Commissioner Schlegel. I did my own research, did the, found the background as much as I possibly could, what was available on both of those individuals, and made my decision that they were the best choices available for the city commission at the time, but many people voted for them, including myself. So, the democratic process was answered. It was just not answered in the way that a few people insisted that they, they haven't answered. To Mr. Verito, you alluded to speaking for everyone when you speak at public comment. That is simply not true. I don't know what you see when you see in the mirror, what you see in the mirror, but you also mentioned that I tend to misconstrue what you say. It's because I don't understand you. I can tell you, and you talk about people, me not speaking to, about people, what people talk to me about as far as conversations are concerned, I can tell you that I've had many conversations about you with members of the public, and none of them are positive about you. They also say they don't understand you either and don't know what they're, what you're trying to accomplish. What I have said to them is, I believe that you are trying to accomplish something good for the city, although at this point right now, as I'm talking to you, I still don't know what that is. So, when you do come up for public comment sometime, please tell us what that is, that you're trying to accomplish for the city, so that people, many, many people who have no clue can at least understand why you say what you say and do what you do. Beyond that, as far as the lighthouse, the lighthouse is an icon in the city of Marquette, and I absolutely support what the city of Marquette is, is planning to do with the lighthouse area. I think we've got a good plan. We've had several work sessions. Mr. Verito was at one, and we appreciate his comments as well. Made some very good comments about what the plan was and, and put some, a little, a few other suggestions in that we are going to use, because yes, we do listen, but we don't always agree with what everybody says. And we have the right to our opinion as well, but we also have to be representative of the people who do comment to us, not at public comment. I do want to thank everyone at public comment, and I know it's very difficult to come up and be a public speaker, and you show a lot of courage when you do that. Whether you agree with us or not, doesn't matter. We do want to hear your voices, and, and we do want to hear what you, what you have to say. But again, please understand, the majority of people that, that deal with us, as Commissioner Reynolds just mentioned, will talk to us via email, will talk to us via phone, or stop us on the street. Happens all the time. Each one of us on the Commission is well-known, and one of the good things about living in this area is people have no, they have no concern whatsoever about stopping us, and they'll say, hey, Mike, hey, how about this? In fact, I had somebody do that just yesterday, and the way they opened it up was, I need to talk to you. Okay, I know them, and I know what, that's just fine. And I said, okay, what do you got to say? Shoot. And he told me what he had to say. So, you know, please understand that many people do comment or do communicate with us in other ways, and their opinions are just as important, and I feel personally that I represent those people as well as I represent everyone else. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mayor Pearl Tim Stonehouse, please.
Let's start with an easy one. I appreciate the comments from Ms. Roberts relating to the stop signs on Lake Shore and Washington, and I think that's something we should send to the Traffic Committee and have them, have them take a relook at it and see what, what they would come up with.
On Ms. Roberts' behalf, I'm so delighted-
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Ho, 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 ho. You do not have the floor.
I apologize.
Okay, then, okay, you do not have the floor. Commissioner Stonehouse does.
And I'm not trying to sing the same tune here, but the first time I heard about the condos was when I opened up Facebook. The city of Marquette did not solicit this, this proposal. It came. So, there's a process that we have to follow when you get that, and that's going to feed its way through the Planning Commission. And for all those folks that spoke tonight or would wish to speak, I ask you to go to the Planning Commission meeting. If you want to go to the one tomorrow, that's an open one, too, and you can let yourself be heard then. You can hit the next one, because that is what is important, that you have an opportunity to talk to the people that will be making the first cut on the project, and in fact, the second, the third, and I think the fourth, as they go through a public hearing process. And Mr. Schlegel's been nearly six years on the Planning Commission. He certainly is an expert on what they will do and how they will do it, and I hope he'll talk to that a little bit so folks will understand. The full documentation on that project, to make sure we can dispel rumors, is available on the website for the Planning Commission. You can go through it, and it's quite voluminous, but it would certainly provide an education for everybody, myself included, as to what the proposal actually is and means. Doubtlessly will be an issue of some concern as we move forward, but we're just here. We're trying to work the issue with you at the same time and try and get a handle on what's actually happening. I would point out just a couple of other things. The Recreation Master Plan is a document that is produced every five years. It's important that we have it, because without it, we cannot get public support, particularly state of Michigan money, to institute recreation programs. So, if you don't have a plan on file and accepted by the state, you can't go after national resources grants. You can't get other, other opportunity for grant programs, recreation in the city. Important document for that. It is not an execute document. In other words, as a plan, it doesn't mean we're going to do everything in it, and we've established a priority to do it. That's a smaller, very small portion of it. We'll talk about doing what we have opportunities to do, and that becomes based on customer surveys, i.e. public surveys, what the public is looking at, what they want. The plan is also a very large inventory of what recreational assets we have in the city, how they can best be used. So, it's a good document, also available on the website. Current plan, please take a look at that, and it's, it's well worth the time to read. Lastly, we are still ice found in the Port of Marquette. The ice looks pretty, but it's very dangerous, particularly anything offshore is rotted ice, and the opportunity to go through it is quick, and you don't want to go there. But what I'm trying to caution people is, don't go near the ice on the shore either. In other words, what's on the littoral, on between the beach and the wave, may look solid, but it isn't. So, be very, very careful, very apprehensive of getting close to that. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This last week, the Commission had an opportunity to tour the new hospital, and I just wanted to talk about that for a second. We went with the Brownfield Development Authority. We got to tour from the ground up, see the amazing work they've been doing there. There's a lot of good design qualities. Skilled labor is incredible going on there. Efficiency technology, I think the city of Marquette, the residents, the community is going to be impressed with that building. I am looking forward to seeing it completed. And then just one other note on the condos. I've had a lot of people contacting me, emailing me, stopping me at work, calling me on my phone, asking about this, and I think it's great that the love of the lake and the love of the views and the feeling of this town is so strong. I have seen a, kind of an uproar on social media, and one of those pieces, there was a big, long thread today about how people can get involved, and I actually think we're going to see some more application for things like the Harbor Advisory Committee or the Brownfield Development Authority, those boards that sometimes don't have as many people willing to step up, but there is some interest, and I'm hoping that that will continue. So, always a silver lining, and I think that may be the case here. Looking forward to more conversation on that in the weeks and months to come.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you. You guys have done a pretty good job of picking apart all of my high, high-temperature moments right here. I want to thank everybody that's reached out to me via email or phone calls or anything along those lines that's been willing to have conversation about this, especially the condos, especially along with that, it doesn't stop there, goes on down to fluoride. I appreciate their willingness to, to reach out and, and to let me know how, how you're feeling. And I really want to speak to the condo issue, because I'm somewhat aware, I mean, I've been through a number of these processes with the, with the Planning Commission prior, along with the previous condominium, condominium development that was proposed. Every, every one of us has the right to walk into the building and ask for a PUD. If we have an idea, a picture, it can be whatever it wants. You could put Mickey Mouse on that, on the top of that, that development, and we would still have to consider it, okay? And would have to go through the process that the Planning Commission has in place and is very, very effective. They, they seek the, the PUD. If that's approved, and it's all bound by the state, they have nothing to say if, so long as it's all been worked through the process properly and it abides by the laws that are set forth by the state, they have to allow it to continue on. At that point in time, you might see a site plan review come through, and that's when things get a little bit fun for you guys, because you're, you're so passionate, and myself, believe me. But this is where you guys can say, you know what, I think it is a monster. I don't like it. I don't want this. I don't want that. The parking is a bunch of hooey, and I want, I want to see this instead. It doesn't fit in where, where you're proposing this. That's great. I want you guys to have that, that, that passion for the, the area and make sure that it's not something that we're going to regret ten, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty years down the line, okay? I guarantee it. I guarantee that building, the reason that it, that it got taken off, the agenda for tomorrow night, if I was a betting man, is because they looked at it and said, it is an ugly beast of a mess. That would not fit in, in that, in that area, okay? Public got loud, that's great. Get loud, but don't come banging on, on the, on the city commission like we are responsible for that monstrosity, okay? Part of the process, of course, and I want to hear it, don't get me wrong, but don't, we did not bring this, that picture or, or the development to the community, all right? And those people have every right to bring that at the same time. The process would continue on from there, you know? Can they satisfy certain things? Can, will the infrastructure within the city, the, the pipes underground, the, the streets that surround it, the parking that's available, will those things be available to satisfy the certain needs that are within the, the Planning Commission's right to dictate? So, that's what they're going to do. And, and if it comes back, great. Let's, let's talk about it further. Let's make sure that it is what we want it to be. I can see that it's going to, I wouldn't be surprised if it doesn't come back, but, you know, who am I? I don't know these guys that well. I, I know that they've been through the process once before. The, one other thing, amongst the forty going through my mind right now, that one person's asked me how I feel about that building, and I'm okay with that, because I'm not here to, I don't have a personal agenda. I'm here to represent the people of our community, and, and that's, and that's something that I know that we're all here for. But at the same time, I do have an opinion about these things, and I'd be happy to talk to you about it, should you want to. And I think I've answered every email, every phone call that's come through, and, and I'm glad that you're doing that. But, you know, we are, we are only human, and we are a part of this process as much as you are, and we look forward to making sure that what does go in place there is going to be the best fit as much as possible for this community. Sorry for the long wind, but that's what you get. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, let's start off with fluoride, and I promise to keep it short. Fluoride is a naturally occurring mineral. It's fallen on every body of water. It's not enough, it's not concentrated enough to be effective. That's why we add fluoride to our city water. Fluoride is gathered from fluoride phosphate rock, which also provides phosphates for every sort of, every soda drink that's out there. Then that rock continues on to be used in industrial uses. So, it does not, fluoride does not come from industrial waste. Fluoride starts as a pure product. I could go on and on about, you know, the arguments. I will just say fluoride toothpaste by itself is not enough to prevent dental caries. It's just not. It's been proven. I would like to make three points, and that's all I'm going to say. The first is, the fluoride in the Marquette water supply is regulated, it's monitored, and it's safe. Always has been, always will be. Point number two, there have been thousands of verified scientific studies by reputable groups. It has been proven to be false, that fluoride in water causes cancer, low IQ, lead absorption, neurotoxicity, or osteoporosis. False. If you have doubts, I would suggest, ask either, call up the county health department or your local dentist or dental hygienist. The health department is tasked with providing for the good health of local residents and for promoting healthy living based on a scientific basis. I have talked to the people, the director of the county health department, I've talked to the medical director. They're a hundred percent for it. Don't take my word for it. You call them up. Dentists, dentists are very smart people. We know that. They go to college for four years, and if they're lucky enough, they get into dental school. When they're in dental school, they pursue, they pursue a degree for a doctor of dental science. While they're in dental school, all they do is study dental techniques, theories, and use. Then when they graduate, dentists work all day, every day on teeth. These are smart people. They don't just follow blindly. They know what they're doing and why they're doing it. No, don't let me, don't take my word for it. Don't take anybody else's word for it. You call the health department. You talk to your dentist. And by the way, every dentist in the county, one hundred percent endorses fluoride. Please, I'm talking, I have the floor. I let you talk, you let me talk, okay? No comments? Don't talk. We're all, have you leave. Those are my opinions. You gave yours. I'll be glad to discuss this with you later. Next, do not forget that the agenda item on those condos were canceled tomorrow night. I think you all know that.
The meeting is there.
The meeting is, the meeting, the agenda is, the agenda item is canceled. The meeting will go on.
Right.
Carl Zugger, very glad to see this dedicated to Carl. Carl's just a great guy, and he's, he's worked and deserves this honor. It's the very least that he should be getting. And lastly, we're, tonight, we're criticized because a couple of commissioners did not have comment. I will tell the commissioners, you do not have to comment during commissioners' comments if you don't want to. So, would you please be quiet? You're interrupting me. So, if you don't want to talk, I'm perfectly fine with it. City manager, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for approving the Carl Zugger naming at Father Marquette Park. Well-deserved. My community office hours for the month of May will be a week from Wednesday on the ninth, 10:00 a.m. at the Peter White Public Library. However, the room has changed. It is now in the Dandelion Cottage Room, which I think is on the east side, the front street side, maybe, of the library. For those of you using the dog park, the dog park is now closed at Tours Park. We're beginning some electrical work out there related to our JCI program. Also, you'll notice around town, we've begun work on the replacement of all of our traffic signals. You'll notice some intersections blocked, primarily right now, the poles are being, the foundations are being put in for the poles, so we have fourteen intersections that will be affected in the next couple of months. That's all I have. Thank you.
We are adjourned.